Welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the East Central Defense Division Board of Trustees being held on April twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two, beginning at six thirty. My present, can we have a little call?
Yes, Delra Zill, Hyland, Ginger Reason, um, Jay Garza.
Here.
Jane Solke.
Here.
Claudia Periandos. Deputy Press is here. John Massengill.
Here.
Mr. President, Neil Cole.
Very much, before we go any farther, I'd like to, I have a couple of special guests. Of course, everybody knows my beautiful bride back there, but my thanks to said my beautiful bride is my twin brother, a four-years-old. Everybody, special guest. Alright, let's move on to prayer and prayers. Donna, who do we have?
Ms. Orsak and Senator Harmony Hopp.
Good evening, President Massengill, Superintendent Costano, and our EC School Board. I am Stephanie Orsak, the proud principal of Harmony Elementary School. We are super honored to be here to represent Harmony Elementary this evening's prayer and pledge. With me, I have our fantastic fifth grade safety controls. The pledges this evening will be led by Blaine, Josiah, Matthew, and Rebecca. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
The prayer will be recited for us today by Corinne Martinez. Please bow your heads.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work in the spirit of joy and newness.
Thank you, you may be seated. Alright, good evening, everybody. I'm so excited to have our fifth grade safety controls here on campus. At Harmony Elementary, fifth graders are allowed to apply to be a safety control on campus. It's something that is reserved only for our fifth graders, and they set a great role model and precedence for our younger students, and it's something that, as they grow up, they are super excited to be once they become a fifth grader. So with us today, I have an amazing group of kiddos who have done amazing things at Harmony this year. They actually worked with us to go through what they wanted to share with you today, the bullet points and what they do, and they have a script that they have prepared for a little presentation on what it is that they do at Harmony.
Good evening, you are a great faculty at Harmony Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Corinne Martinez and I am a safety control.
Hi, I'm Lisa Lozano and I'm a sergeant.
Hi, I'm Rita Zia, I'm a new sergeant.
Hi, I'm Corinne Martinez and I'm a lieutenant.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Dennis and I'm a lieutenant.
Hi, my name is Matthew Privey and I am a member.
I'm just out of guitar, I'm a member of the individual.
I'm Blake Harker, I'm now a member of the safety control.
I'm Jeffrey Long, I'm a member of the safety control.
Hi, I'm Rebecca Byrd and I'm a member of the safety control.
Hi, I'm Lucy Stone, I'm a member of the safety control.
Hi, I'm Fiona Lewis and I'm a member of the safety control.
Hi, I'm Morgan Dallas and I'm a safety member.
As a control, we help around this school in the morning and at the end of the day.
In the morning, we open corridors that drop off and help students out of their vehicle.
Use stop signs to cross students safely across the street.
Open their hands to the buzzer at their front door to help students out.
Greet students in the lobby and tell them good morning.
Help students find their way to their passengers and put up the flags.
During the day, we
Help the cafeteria staff by bringing the crates back to the cafeteria.
Help them when others need.
And at the end of the day, we help pass out the end-of-the-day snacks.
Being a control helps to build security.
Open students' door.
Be safe and be respectful.
Have a positive attitude.
Helping other students in the control.
Assist teachers and staff with school tasks.
Being a control has made us do
Create, special, awesome, mature. Set a good example for rewarded, responsible for a role model and a leader of the school and an example.
So then I asked the students how they wanted us to end this. They, they had a request for how we end. At Harmony Elementary, Coach Buckley, who is our teacher of the year and sponsor of our safety controls, has created an affirmation that has gone viral at this point. Alright, everybody, you ready? One, two, three. That is called the rip flare.
Everybody, please say, uh, to do our work to recognize your community. The center of our focus, both subjects, but even if you have three groups of folks that are really excited to present to the community tonight. We've got some state champions, we've got some national qualifiers, and we've got some amazing citizens. They're contributing tremendous amounts to many students in the community.
Alright, good evening, Mr. Costano, President Massengill, members of the board. Thank you so much for letting us recognize very special people tonight. First off, we would like to call up our two thousand and twenty-two Texas High School Boys Bowling State Champions. ECHS has a bowling team? Who knew? We still get that to this day when we mention it. Yes, we have a bowling team, and we might add that we're not bad either. Except for that zero-for-twelve and two-for-ten inaugural season way back in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen. From that point on, though, we've had individual district champ, boy and girl co-ed district champs, regional qualifiers, and even once before each team qualified for the state tournament. It's important to note that our Hornets bowl in the toughest high school district in the San Antonio and probably the state area. Teams include Samuel Clemmons, Steele, Randolph, Judson, and Wagner, who are all regularly in the playoffs, and none of which are as young as the Hornets' five-year-old bowling team. We also bowl across the, across districts against the likes of Johnson, Madison, McArthur, Lee, and Roosevelt, which make up the Northeast One District, also including perennially strong state qualifying teams as well. The Boys finished out a great district season this year with, at eleven-and-one, also outright district champs for the very first time. At the regional tournament, the Boys ended, just like the Girls did, as regional runners-up to Clemmons. It seemed at the time that the Clemmons team just had our number, as they have for the previous four years. But we still earned our second trip to the state tournament, and it was the first time getting to bowl in it, though because of COVID stole our chance two years ago. Either way, we made our way to the Grand Prairie this year and didn't fail to impress. Three games of qualifying were highlighted by our district boys' single champion, Diego Razo, and his two ninety-nine game, so-so close to perfection. We had a best-in-the-district two thousand and seventeen average, by the way, and if you know bowling, that is not shabby. Once we got past the singles games of qualifying and into the top ten, it was time to bowl bakers, which is basically five bowlers bowling two frames each to give you the game score. This is the true team part of the games. Three good games of baker, bakers, and we were in the final five teams. Another good set of bakers and the field cut to the top two boys' teams in the states. You might be wondering who the other team was. Well, we'll give you a second to think. Yes, of course, it was none other than our nemesis Clemmons, who had beaten us one of two times in the season and edged us out for the regional title. How could it be any other way? Well, our Hornets were not intimidated. They continued to bowl their hearts out, beating Clemmons two of the three games and earning that beautifully huge state championship trophy, trophy that no other team in the state has. Come on, guys, pick that trophy up. After all that, we've just performed, the well-known team from San Antonio, no longer got to bring that trophy home. We are still going to consider ourselves EC's best-kept secret, only now will be a secret that everyone knows. Coach Brewer would like to take a second and personally thank a few people for being part of the team's success. The first of which is his daughter, Jayden, for poking and prodding him to start coaching her in bowling, since she, she decided that volleyball wasn't really working out. We also want to thank Ms. Leminski and Ms. Gomez for being great sponsors. Coach also wants to thank the great parents of the team that have trusted him and his nuggets to getting their games as good as they can be. And lastly, thank you to Coach B's wife, Ms. Margaret, for being the bedrock of support that she's been since day one. Without any of those things, none of this would have happened. And our boys are wave guys, remember I called your names, Sterling Eel, a junior. Chris Hanson, also a junior. David Mendoza, a junior. Garrett Vaughn, sophomore. Vincent Wosie, a senior. Diego Razo, team captain and a senior. And then coaches, who, from what I understand, are volunteers in our district, not, not employed by the district, but volunteers. Eldon Brewer. Jason Davy. Madeline Perez. Jayden Brewer, and Cynthia Leminski. Yes, Ms. Leminski is a sponsor, she does volunteer. She's like, don't forget my paycheck. Yes, so congratulations to this amazing bowling team and these amazing parents who are volunteers and our wonderful sponsor, district sponsor, for doing this for these kiddos and for them representing us so well. Congratulations, y'all. Will the parents of these amazing children be standing to be recognized? Next, we would like to call up our Texas Association of Future Educators, students, students up. We've got, we're going to call up Destiny Hernandez, Analia Lopez, and Sasha Salinas, who are going to Nationals for Taffey for Ethical Dilemma. They're headed to Nationals, look at those medals the girls have. These are some outstanding future educators that we want to recognize. Also headed to Nationals, we've got Ryan Falcone, Charity Good, and Madeline Kniper for Ethical Dilemmas on varsity. Next, we would like to recognize Ryan Falcone, also going to Nationals for Lesson Plan and Delivery of Humanities Varsity. Again, Ryan Falcone, he's been teaching at Central. He's going to Nationals for Educators Rising Moment. And then Gabrielle Johnson for Impromptu Speakers. These students are going to Nationals for the Association of Future Educators in Washington, DC this summer, and we want to wish them the best of luck. And we also would like to offer them jobs whenever they They're in Central. We expect you all to be able to teach in Central. Congratulations. Will their parents please stand up and be recognized? Thank you very much. Next, we would like to recognize some outstanding community members. It's Ms. JoBeth Garza. JoBeth Garza is an East Central community member who wanted to give back to her community. She worked with our Pecan Valley Councilor and Communities in Schools Site Coordinator to set up a donation of winter coats, fleece pullovers, sweaters, gloves, and a few blankets for students and families in the Pecan Valley area. We're so grateful for her contribution to the campus, and we look forward to future winter gear drives as we approach the winter seasons in the future. We want to thank you, Ms. JoBeth, for your contribution to our community in the Pecan Valley area. And then Ms. Maria Cortez, she able to join tonight?
She didn't.
She didn't come. Okay, great. So Ms. Cortez is a community member whose son graduated from East Central and served in the military. And after he passed away, she started an organization called Roll with Shoe, Shoe Rack, and they donate shoes, they collect shoes and donate them to students in need. And right before Christmas time, she delivered twenty pairs of shoes to each one of our seven elementary schools. So a hundred and forty of our elementary kiddos got brand new shoes at Christmas time. And we wanted to recognize her and Roll with Shoe Rack for being partners of ours in that endeavor and just to say thank you, so. Ms. JoBeth Garza, do you have family here? Could we, could your family stand and be recognized also? I apologize to the guys, to everyone. Thank you to everyone who paid tonight to be recognized. We appreciate you and, and we appreciate you being members of our community, so thank you very much.
Yeah, congratulations to the bowling team. And I have one question, where do you guys practice at?
Alright, JoBeth, we're going to take a short ten-minute break for, so anybody to get home and do homework or keep up the odds down. Take a short ten-minute break and hold your hands in the air. About six fifty-eight. We're going to, uh, the bowling team, six-foot mark, first down, report, Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, trustees, this month's first number four is your electronic packet. Please write down, provide the additional information about community activity listed in this conference.
Alright, we will move on to six point two, contract and rules for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year, Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, in your electronic packet, you'll see a list of multi-year contract and rule recommendations as well as one-year contract and rule recommendations. Has been a minor amendment since the board vote was, was published, and so we printed out and placed in your miscellaneous packet. That is the most accurate, so please review those in your discretion. If you have any questions, concerns, or would like additional information, please let me know, they're listed by multi-year as well as the single year listed by campus assignment.
We will move on to six point three, benefits, risk benefits department update.
Sir, Mr. President, I'd like to call Shannon Burns up to the podium to provide the board update for the risk management department, in your miscellaneous packet, her presentation she'll share with you this evening is there, if you prefer to follow along that way. Burns?
Alright, this is on right. Alright, we've got anything, Mr. Massengill, Mr. Costano, our trustees. I'm happy to present to you our Risk Management Department update. For the teaching and learning environment, we focus on currently safety meetings. Our safety committee is made up of about forty-five members between our campuses and our departments. And at these meetings, we discuss our workers' comp trends, accident investigations, and relevant safety topics. For priority two, our high-performance and engaged workforce, we focus on a comprehensive approach to health and wellness through the central health and wellness center for employees and dependents who are enrolled in our self-funded insurance plan. We're in our second year of the self-funded plan, and our clinic utilization has increased by nearly fifty-six percent. And members have the ability to meet all their primary care needs through the clinic, including in-person, telephonic, and video visits free of charge. Each month, we review clinic surveys where patients who have visited can leave feedback and inspiring encouraging to see the positive comments about Dr. Mill, who's the primary care physician there. One of our primary goals with respect to the addition of the clinic was to be able to provide quality care free of charge. A majority of our employees are on high deductible plans, which means they have to meet at higher out-of-pocket expense before any benefits can be paid through the health plan. And the free primary care allows them the ability to take care of themselves without having to be worried about paying for it. In addition to the clinic, we also remind members that they still have access to the safety initiative light network for other primary care providers or specialists. And then we've been utilizing the telemedicine for a couple of years now, and that's provided to all employees and their dependents, and that's also free of charge. And so since September first of this year, through the end of March, our members have completed seven hundred and sixteen visits for a cost avoidance of about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And this benefit was especially valuable during COVID. Patients didn't have to go into a clinic and worry about being exposed to somebody else, or they were fearful of having, they didn't have to go and potentially expose somebody else. For inclusive and collaborative partnerships, we focus on utilizing TCG, which is our third-party administrator for our four oh three D and four fifty-seven retirement plans. Although our employees are going to retire with TRS, it's important for them to understand that they may need to save additionally for retirement. TCG has been able to provide presentations to our staff to explain how TRS retirement works, but how they also have the opportunity to fill a potential earnings gap when they retire. We began the education initiative in two thousand and twenty-one, and as of February of two thousand and twenty-two, we had increased nine percent of the number of staff who are participating with a fifteen percent increase in the dollar amount that they are contributing. For resources and operational excellence, our focus is protecting our greatest resource, which is our human resource. As part of our participation in TASB Risk Management Fund, we're able to conduct site surveys with our TASB, TASB Risk Solutions consultants. Through the survey, safety experts are able to take a tour of our campus, and they can reinforce our positive safety efforts and identify any opportunities for improvement. And we also monitor our workers' comp claim, and we are continuing to trend downward for the sixth year in a row. Hopefully, we did have a low year in nineteen twenty, that was called an anomaly because we were doing remote working with COVID. But all of our top departments do a really good job of managing safety with their staff, so they aren't doing a lot of acknowledgement for that. Alright, in conclusion, we're going to be continuing to educate our employees on the retirement. That's not a one-and-done. We will have education for new hires when they are onboarding, and then we will continue to have TCG send reps out annually during our open enrollment so that employees will be reminded of that opportunity. And then we'll continue to promote the utilization of Fit and Cap, which is a financial wellness tool that anybody who's enrolled in a four fifty-seven plan has access to that online tool. And then we'll be continuing to monitor our health plan and data to develop strategies to continue to optimize healthcare. And we'll continue to work with TASB to mitigate workers' comp claims and develop tools to measure other key performance indicators. And if you have to answer any questions?
I would feel curious if you ever checked throughout the district, throughout all schools, just to make sure that we, you know, everybody knows, you know, about the program? And if anybody's new, that we have that part of the package in there.
For the retirement?
No, or the clinic, I'm sorry, I was talking about that.
Yes, and we will be having open enrollment pretty soon, and so we will have representatives from our insurance, our third-party administrator, and we will have representatives from the clinic that can also just remind them of all the different services that they can have at the clinic.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alright, we will move on to, uh, six point four, Student Services Department update.
Someone like to call John Nades up to the podium to provide the board an update of our Student Services Department's progress for this year. In your electronic packet, you can follow along John's presentation as well as, and Jayden's presentation, as well as, uh, get Hart's copy of his latest packet, if you prefer to follow along that way. Ms. Hart, Mr. Nades, what is yours?
Good evening, Mr. Costano, Mr. Massengill, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to agree to have students update on our major review for our goals. Thank you for the opportunity to showcase our student services review, which includes Yale services. Listen to the needs of our students, families, and staff are our focus. We connect them to the corporate resource to meet the needs. To meet their needs, we continue to work with all the campus and public staff to meet our goals. Until the many bear can stand in a way that affects the environment. We're all set, uh, we're all trained and prepared and listen to respond, and we all know that it takes courage to get a job in a free day of recreation.
Student Services aligns with priority one by identifying attendance trends and providing support as necessary. This school year, this school year, we included our health services staff on the attendance committees at each campus. Including this staff, we can help identify potential medical needs of chronically absent children, students. By identifying these needs, we can reduce frequent absences. Student Service also has an EC Community Attendance Meeting that happens quarterly, and as a result of that feedback, we updated the EC ISD Attendance Contract this year. In addition, all Student Services sub-department meetings are developed to address student needs. For instance, Health Services participated in youth mental health first day training in September. Our assistant principals had training in bullying, student guardianship concerns, the community event process, and other special population procedures.
Priority two, the high-performance and engaged work. Our district values of a high-performance and engaged workforce. A family and community engagement framework was introduced to all our district leadership teams in July of two thousand and twenty-one. These leaders then presented, this ring works for the departments and campuses with the goal of participating monthly in family and community engagement activities. These leaders then presented, this ring works for departments and campuses with the goal of participating monthly, family and community engagement activities. Currently, our, our departments and our campuses are organized over two hundred and ninety-five engaged individuals throughout the district. These activities range from Facebook sessions on vaping dangers and special education information. Health fairs, around the literacy nights, math nights, adopt a hop-up highway, donuts with dad, and the gold, gold rock dance.
Knowing the gaps our students will be bringing back to school this year, the district will be able to add community and staff members at every single campus. The additional staff assists students with any needs, wellness, social concerns, or even simple food insecurities. Additionally, a community and school staff member is available to meet with EC ISD staff to address any self and or family social emotional concerns. We also continue our partnership with the Ed Medical Center, who played a vital role with the correction loss of a precious student at Tradition this year.
Priority for resources and operational excellence. At this time, our student service budgets align to the needs of the district to meet regularly and ensure the version of resources effectively, working on items that impact this. Ensuring the budget supports classroom performance and to identify needed after budgets. Student services also will receive a special needs fund, uh, for the district.
So to conclude, student services continues to promote academic excellence. We continually work to plan, provide, and implement strategies for student success. Despite all the challenges and barriers this school year, we embrace the challenge to continue to serve our staff, students, and their families. Looking ahead, will we be reviewing needs assessments to plan for the coming year? Focusing again on attendance, behavior needs, and finding new and innovative ways to promote family and community engagement at the district and campus levels. Thank you for this opportunity and we'll entertain any questions.
It's the, um, monthly dropout prevention meeting, is that new?
Yes, we've always, we've, we've done that and so we've kind of always, uh, now that it's an indicator, now it's even more, they've worked for us to meet. So we've added, uh, negotiation to that meeting, uh, to that group, special ed department group as well. Now it's about special populations that want to be and find to see if they do leave the district, it's where they want to go. Right, so we do need monthly, uh, regularly action, but now it's, it's always been, it's, it's one of the things.
Thanks so much.
This is Scott, I'd like to photograph that.
Photo mom.
Well, you know how to get it.
That was me in the suit. Thank you. I'd still be there.
All right, we will move on to six point five, twenty point one, twenty point two, district external school board quarter three update. Mr. Sciosano?
Service President, Trustees, we wrapped up our quarter three check-ins, uh, across the district. Uh, as you'll recall, this is a continuation of our ongoing efforts to continuously improve and monitor the progress we're making towards reaching our annual results measures across campuses and across departments system-wide. And so tonight is just bringing you our quarterly, uh, scorecard for quarter three. And Dr. Fulwell will provide the board with an overview of the big ideas and next steps.
Good evening, President Massengill, Mr. Sciosano, and the board. So when you open the link on your, um, cover sheet, it'll bring you to this page. And you can scroll down to the external scorecard. We're on quarter three. If you click there, it'll take you to the scorecard. And so if you remember our scorecard, it is, um, on the left side, you have all of our community-based accountability key questions. And so they are all going down to the left side here. Down at the bottom, you have all of our key. So it tells you, um, what the, um, letters mean and then what the colors mean. So if it's blue, it's made, they're maintaining current affairs for this year. Um, if it's a little dark blue, they're maintaining their affairs, but they might be considering a change this year. If it's green, there is a minor change. And if it's orange, there are major changes they're making this year. Um, and then each campus goes in and they signal how they, um, did based on their current data for this quarter. So they go in and, um, they have colored in what type of change they made for this quarter. And then how they feel like they are tracking on this, on each of the key questions. So you have all of the campuses across the top and then the three departments. So BOSS is the Business Operations, Student Services, um, Critical Instruction and Assessment, and then Student and Community Engagement. So that's there for you and all the signaling. Then, um, back over here under the table contents, we also have big ideas and next steps. And so we have our quarter meetings that we had, we held the last two weeks. And during that time, the departments, um, each meet with their sub-departments and then we also meet with each principal. And we talk about how are we doing, what's working well, what's not working well, and then what are we doing for the next quarter to, um, either maintain our efforts and keep going? Or, um, what are we going to do to, um, make any changes to make sure that we're hitting our targets? And so on this sheet here, you'll have each campus and department put, had three big ideas. Typically, one or two things that they're celebrating and then one or two things that they are working on addressing in the fourth quarter to make sure that they're targeting. So, um, these things range, um, from anything from, they're all tied back to the port, to the scorecard. So you can see what they kind of tie back to, um, in column D and F. And then we put just a little description there of what their first two things we're talking about. So things like, um, a lot of people are still working on, um, their community engagements. And there are a few, a lot of community engagement nights happened in the third quarter. So we had a lot of events that happened in the evenings and during the day where, um, parents were able to come in. And, um, we had literacy nights and all sorts of events that happened. So that was an exciting time for a lot of our campuses and our community. And many of our, um, campuses said that they had rapper jumpers of parents and students and members coming in. So that was very exciting. Um, many of our campuses' clubs are running really, really well. So our students are engaged in, um, those clubs, so they're connected to something. Extra-regular on campuses to help them also feel connected. As we're making that connection back into COVID, it's important for us to help students feel, um, successful both academically and socially emotionally. And so we want to help kids feel connected to their campus, to their other peers, and really help them make that connection back to school. So our campuses have done a really great job of offering a lot of opportunity pieces here and, um, ensuring that kids get connected to, um, things like the running clubs and chess clubs and all sorts of different things that kids have expressed they want to be out there. So we have teachers and outside external, um, organizations that are helping to sponsor those. And then students are participating in that. We have lots of professional development that's been going on. And then we're working on continuing to close the gaps. We know that COVID, um, hit a lot of students hard with learning loss. And so we are working hard this year. We talked a lot about that with our, um, in-school supports and also school supports. Help to make sure that students are getting all the supports that they need. And so those efforts are continuing through the third quarter, um, to make sure that students finish strong. And we can give them every single, um, support that we can give them throughout the year.
Just a comment. I recall some years back, uh, at the high school, they did a constitutional little cafe I learned, so, uh. And I was wondering, are they still doing something like that or, or how, you know, that, I mean, you're talking about people coming in to communicate. I know probably some things to add and then some things to make, you know, like, like, change a little, but I was just curious.
Yeah, so constitutional cafes, we do still do them, yes. We haven't, um, had one quite yet, um, that has been to that, to the magnitude it used to have. Um, mostly because we are just haven't, um, quite had the, that amount of people to come together during the school day. Um, but our hope is that we get better.
I just enjoyed it. It's a great spot, other things as well. And it's really great. Like, I took some of the things that I learned and incorporated into the community and I think it's awesome.
It's amazing academic dialogue and to see the kids interacted, I'm completely agree.
Really enjoy those, uh, I'd like to see them really come back. There are enjoyable, uh, like the round tables. Versus that you add there for day three, you know, some of my kids all up to high school kids on the earth.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
All right, we will move on to six point six, upcoming events. Mr. Sciosano?
Trustees in the list ladies packet. You have your calendar for April and May. You can see that they light up in the month of April and May with all kinds of activities, banquets and such. You'll see we have a spring show, uh, twenty ninth and thirtieth for all of our, uh, spirit programs. The high school will also have the GRO, you see the awards ceremony on the twenty eighth, uh, in the bay. Again, you can see the students, a lot of ceremonies for the end of the year, a lot of banquet. So definitely want to double-check those and see if they match with your calendar. Uh, several student groups, uh, the super ten students of the month on the, on the eleventh. Uh, the FFA awards banquet on the seventeen. Uh, middle school, eighth grade, uh, recognitions, uh, at both heritage, uh, on the thirty first, first and, uh, legacy on the eighteenth. Then, of course, graduation on the twenty eighth, right around the corner. So, uh, tons of activities this spring, multiple days in the week, each week throughout May. And of course, uh, students and staff always appreciate, uh, when you can make it to their, uh, any of those events. Your next regularly scheduled meeting on the nineteenth, uh, is going to be at the Patterson. This is our annual service awards. That evening, we'll recognize all of our employees for years of service as well as our retirees. And of course, our teachers of the year will get recognized there as well. Definitely want to make sure you get that date on your calendar. And then on May tenth, as Mr. Massengill pointed out, you have a special meeting on May tenth. Uh, and that's when the demographer that passes is going to present an updated, um, set of findings. I can tell you that preliminarily, they've already discovered, uh, sixteen new residential developments since last year's findings. And so that rapid residential development that you saw a year ago seems to be not only continuing, but accelerating. And so we're looking to, uh, invite the entire community to that, um, uh, board meeting. And, uh, Mr. Massengill has suggested that we hold that at the pack. And so we listed that there. Because we want to make sure that we get as many of the community there as possible to hear from the demographers start in. Um, so that's a big, uh, board meeting, obviously with trustees, but it's a tremendously important meeting to our community. So we'll be pushing the word out, um, through all of our channels to make sure that folks know, um, there'll be some important information shared. It's May tenth, yes, that's going to start at, um, five thirty. I don't have my glasses, so this is like a big blur. But five thirty on May tenth at the pack. Also, you say May the tenth? May the tenth. Isn't that where they also have a concert at the pack? We got a six thirty, uh, back concert at the back. We'll, we'll, we'll be, we'll be back on that. I just wanted to, yeah, thanks for the, thanks for the question. Honestly, can't read. They look like board meeting to me.
Oh, we're gonna have a board meeting. We just decided we're gonna have one.
So tentatively, it's in here. Oh, we'll, we'll see if we can arrange for the pack. Uh, this is what Massengill really wanted to.
I wanted to, I wanted to, uh, encourage the community and everybody that, you know, I'll talk to, encourage as many people we can to come to that May tenth meeting to get the mission we're asking for the district. I think it'd be beneficial for the community to, to be part of that. That way, um, everybody that, uh, sees what's going on also could, can see the actual documentation and the data that, uh, do, that supports that. Uh, it's one thing to see all this construction and, and roads being built and these, uh, land being chewed up. It's another thing to actually see on paper what the, our best will do and what the number to and see what they're projecting. I think it'd be great for as many people as we can to get there on May tenth. Uh, I'd also like to parlay, uh, that this into, uh, in y'all's package, y'all have the EC ISD trustee, uh, adopt to school. It's something that we're going to be doing starting in June. We're going to have a trustee report along with the super tennis report. We're going to have including, uh, the trustee reports on, on, uh, starting in June, board meeting in June. I'm not going to take full credit for this. I believe, uh, Monique has been the one that's really been spearheading, uh, this adopt to school. And I think it's a great thing for the trustees to get involved in, uh, with each and every school in the district. Uh, so what we're doing here is, uh, all the trustees have a home school. And each home school, uh, will be, we get with the principals so the principals can email, uh, the, you know, the superintendent or email the, uh, activities that are going on for the school for the month to each individual trustee for that, that. And everybody will get, be getting this, this little spreadsheet showing where each, each, uh, month which trustee will be for their home school plus the alternative school that they have for that month. I think it's going to be a good thing. I really appreciate both wanting to push this forward and get this going. Uh, so do you have anything you want to comment?
Um, no, I just, um, actually can't take all the credit for it. I learned at one of our, um, conventions from the district. And, um, they said that it was just really a great way to build relationships with their campuses. And a lot of times they'd see me in the evening, but they got, um, an email that said, hey, the fire truck's showing up today. You want to come up to the school or, or have a high school Sunday party or whatever. Um, it was really nice. And sometimes they would just go up and read, uh, to the kids. So, uh, he said that the kids really lit up when they became a part of camp, campus. So I thought we could give it a try. I don't know if they light up in John towns, but.
That's all right, that's all right.
They'll get something out.
So we'll see.
So, yeah, this will run down real quick. I'm going to run down each trustee. So District one, which is Ginger Pivon, her, her home school is going to be Tradition. Uh, District two, which is going to increase its, her, uh, her home school is going to be Oak Press. Uh, District three, John Massengill, Highland Forest is going to be my home school. Uh, District four, uh, Victor Barnes is going to be Harmony. That's going to be his home school. Um, District five, James Mulkey, Sinclair is going to be James Mulkey's home school. Uh, District six, which is Claudia Bardentos, is going to be Salado. And then in and up the pack is going to be District seven, Del Brazil, it's going to be Con Valley. So that's going to be our home schools. So the principals of those schools will email and contact us about certain events or anything that's going on that they might want to participate in. So, uh, I think it's going to be a really good thing. And for the, and this will be going to begin in August and run through May of next year. And so, and we'll rotate, we'll have a home school, but we're going to rotate other schools in the district as far as in the rotation. But, uh, we'll send out this little spreadsheet so everybody sees it, our, our, we'll get somebody to send it out.
So the principal's ECHS is on the visitor list, so Mr. Kane, I don't think you have to email that.
That's every night. With that, appreciate that. And we're going to really look at forward to that involvement. So we will move on to the action agenda, item of the ninth, seven point one, approval of architectural design and construction administration services work related to renovating that the E C E S C auxiliary building.
Mr. Sciosano?
Sir, trustees, uh, as Mr. Massengill indicated, uh, the district's in need of an architect firm to provide the nine construction, uh, administrative services for work that's related to renovations, E S C auxiliary building. This is the building right outside across the parking lot. It historically been utilized for, um, confidential records, storage. Uh, we went electronic on many of those items and we repurposed, uh, in the last one, ECDC, uh, for storage purposes as well. And so, um, we're bringing the A P back into the district, Florisville, relocating in the M S C building in between Legacy and Salado. And so many of our structures will. And so many of our structural staff are being relocated. So that's caused a little bit of domino effect and we're a growing district, obviously. And so we're growing staff as well. And so we needed space for a few years. And so we're moving forward on doing some minor renovations to that facility so that we can convert it from essentially a storage facility to a workspace for many of our curriculum construction team. And so to do that, we need architectural services. As you guys are very well aware, that those services under Texas law and board policy are not to be procured through competitive bids. But that those professional services of licensed or registered, such as licensed or registered certified public accountants, architects, landscape architects, land surveyors, physicians, optometrists, professional engineers, real estate appraisers, and registered nurses. That these services are to be contracted on the basis of demonstrating competence and qualification to perform those services for a fair and reasonable price. Based on those criteria, the staff is going to be recommending Blanca Stirrock Architects to provide these architectural design and construction administration services for this project. The district's worked with Blanca Stirrock for the better part of the last thirty years. Most recently, the board did bring Barry Stirrock and just moved in for both architect and construction management services on all of our health damage roof roofs and H pack replacements. But he's done many projects at virtually every facility, touched just about every facility in the district over the last forty years. So the district does believe that he's demonstrated competence over the course of that time. He's qualified and performed services and he has continuously provided and consistently provided a fair and reasonable price. So we'd be happy to answer any questions. Mr. President, I recommend board approval of selecting Blanca Stirrock Architects LLC to provide architectural design and construction administration services related to renovations to the ESC auxiliary building.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to select Blanca Stirrock Architects LLC to provide architect, design, and construction administration services related to the ESC auxiliary building. Do you have a motion? A motion from Mr. Victor Garza. Do you have a second? Have a second from Del Brazil. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to seven point two, approval of engineering, design, and construction administration services asphalt projects.
Sir, Mr. President, very similar to the previous item. The district is in need of services for construction project. In this case, it's engineering, design, and construction administration services for work related to asphalt projects in the district, specifically here at the district office. Based on the criteria of qualification, demonstrating competence, and fair and reasonable price, the district is recommending CDS Murray to provide engineering, design, and construction administrative services for the work related to these asphalt projects. The district's worked with CDS Murray on several projects in the past and is currently doing so. The fees for their services will be negotiated following the board's decision based on the basic fee schedule for engineering services that was previously adopted by the board. We'd be happy to answer any questions about those projects or scope of work as well as CDS Murray and their services the district in the past. Mr. President, I recommend board approval selecting CDS Murray to provide engineering, design, and construction administration services related to asphalt projects as presented.
We have a recommendation from superintendent to select CDS Murray to provide engineering, design, and construction administration services related to asphalt projects. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza. Do you have a second? Second from John Masagil. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to seven point three, Universal Benefits Consortium Health Plan Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three premiums.
Trustees, the premiums that we presented tonight are in your electronic packet. You can follow along as Shannon Burns presents the premiums and our health plan for Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three for our employees. As you are aware, the district runs a self-funded program and again opted this year out of TRS to continue to manage our own healthcare. Again, our healthcare program is all about access. It's all about preventative healthcare in the interest of wellness. We believe that if we're not well, we can't serve well. And that we are, we want to use this as a tool to serve our employees better and their families, but also to educate and inform so that we're not reactive in the way we take care of ourselves. Educators like many, many folks across many professions are notorious for self-sacrificing behaviors. They don't take care of themselves and it's counterintuitive. Because they don't take care of themselves, they're, they're not as well as they otherwise could be to take care of our kids. And so this was a leap of faith a couple of years ago with the board's support. As Shannon indicated earlier, our, our staff loves our clinic. It's very accessible. It's very affordable. Our physician is fantastic, rate reviews. And so we want to continue moving forward. The market is very unpredictable and volatile in so many ways when it comes to healthcare. That's not a new thing, but post-COVID, very much so. And so we've made some adjustments, but we're very pleased with what we're bringing you tonight. We are going to see some, some subtle, I would consider, premium increases that align with inflation. But even our increases in premiums for next year are still less than TRS premiums this year. And TRS has not announced their increases for next year. So we feel like it still provides a good cost value. But we also know that the quality of the access and the care itself is superior to what we experienced for many years prior with TRS. I'll turn over to Shannon for a little bit more specificity.
All right, hello again, Mr. Masagil, Mr. Scott, and our trustees. So yes, as Mr. Scott indicated, this is our second year of the self-help plan. So these premiums and the table that you have will be beginning September first of Twenty Twenty Two and go through August thirty first of Twenty Twenty Three. If you look at the table that actually has the list of premiums, you'll see a top table and then you'll see a table below. The first title, the first table is titled PHA and the second one is titled non-PHA. Within each table, you'll see the rates for three different plans, a high deductible, a basic, and an enhanced plan. And then the corresponding coverage tiers such as employee only, employee spouse, employee children, and employee family coverage. The rate column is the total monthly rate. The district column shows the amount contributed by state and local funds, which is increasing from three sixty to three seventy-five. The third column shows the amount to be contributed by the employee and the last column shows the increase that the employee would experience. The non-PHA shows the same data. The difference is whether or not the employee and spouse would get a PHA discount. So a PHA is a personal health assessment. And our UDC consultant is recommending that we implement a PHA system. An employee and any covered spouse would get a PHA completed by a caring T C staff. And that would consist of high weight blood pressure, a fasting blood draw. And then they would have that established baseline for their health. And if they would complete that between sometime next week, around the twenty fifth through the end of July, then they would qualify for a twenty-five dollar if it's just an employee or employee children plan. Or they could qualify for a fifty-dollar discount if it's an employee plus any covered spouse. And so both the employee and spouse would have to complete a PHA in order to qualify for the discount. And then the second chart shows the plan designs. And so there's, based on our member utilization, our consultants have recommended a few changes in our plan designs. The first change is a tier structure for utilization of the Baptist health system. So San Antonio area is a large Baptist health system network. And our data shows that a large percentage of our members are choosing a Baptist health system provider or facility. So we could enter into a special contract with the Baptist health system that would give us even further discounts for employees if they choose to use that. We don't want to restrict our employees to just the Baptist health system. So the entire nationwide network is still an option under these plans. It's just that if anybody chooses to go to a Baptist health system provider, then they would have to meet a lower deductible. So for example, if you were on the employee HD plan, your deductible's three thousand. If you were escape within Baptist health system network, it would be fifteen hundred. So the second change is the implementation of co-pays for urgent care facilities and emergency rooms. In evaluating our data, our members are utilizing emergency rooms at a higher rate than the trendy benchmarks. And of that usage, a significant percentage of those plans are potentially avoidable, meaning that they likely could receive care at some place other than an emergency room. That would have been a lower cost for them as well as the plan. Based on our consultant's recommendation, we're proposing an urgent care facility co-pay of fifty dollars if it's a Baptist health system urgent care and a hundred dollar co-pay if it's not Baptist health system urgent care. And then an ER co-pay of two fifty if it's a Baptist health system ER and five hundred for a non-Baptist health system ER. So, so far to date with this plan year, we have about fifty-two thousand in ER costs. It would be that potentially avoidable category. And last year it was about ninety-six thousand. So it's quite substantial. It's mainly the recent in the emergency rooms. And oftentimes employees go because they know it's there, it's convenient, and they're just looking at it as more of an after-hour facility as opposed to a true life-threatening emergency. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the Universal Benefits Consortium Health Plan Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three and the proposed premiums as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the Universal Benefits Consortium Health Plan Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three proposed premiums as presented. Do you have a motion?
I move.
Have a motion from Mr. Del Brazil. Have a second?
Aye.
Have a second from Victor Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seven point four, Toyota donation, Mr. Scott.
Trustees, the district has had an ongoing partnership with Toyota. They've been a really good friend of the district and have always stepped up in times of need to support our staff and our students with financial support. So once again, Toyota's donated fifty thousand dollars to East Central ISB. In order for Toyota to do that, they have to donate to a five oh one C three organization. And our East Central School Foundation has again stepped up to receive that donation. And the foundation, being a five oh one C nonprofit organization, is going to turn that around and donate that fifty thousand dollars to the district. And the district's a way to purchase technology for all of our campuses. We're going to put that fifty thousand dollars towards Chromebooks. We learned through the pandemic that accessibility is very critical in our community. Where our goal is to move as close to one-to-one for every child, device for every child as possible. But we also know that state accountability is moved all online. And so when it comes to a long time for standardized testing to happen across the system, all of our students are going to need devices. And so we've been preparing our infrastructure and our, and our hardware so that we can do that. And this is going to help us move one step closer to reaching our goals. We'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, this is our policy, CDC local being that it's over five thousand dollars. The board was formally accept the donation. Who's the foundation? We do have some representatives.
I think we have representatives from the Kayla Foundation. I think President Mary Beth is here. And that beautiful lady sitting next to her, I think her name is Robyn Masagil. And I'd like to say thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Our pleasure.
Congratulations on the successful Kayla a couple of weeks ago. That was a wonderful event. Appreciate that as well. That was tremendous. Thank you.
Mr. President, I recommend approval, East Central Foundation donation, fifty thousand dollars as presented.
We have a recommendation from superintendent to approve the donation from Toyota to the East Central Infant School District Foundation, East Central Foundation donation. Do you have a motion? Have a, have a motion from Monique Creasus and a second from James Mulkey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to seven point five, budget amendment twenty-one dash twenty-two dash zero-three, Mr. Scott.
Trustees, the district is in the process of purchasing land for a future school site. The district will be using fund balance to purchase this particular piece of land. Therefore, what we're bringing to you tonight is a budget amendment from fund balance. The amendment will allow the necessary entries onto the district's fiscal record. The increase is for one million and seventy-five thousand dollars. And I would be happy to answer any questions about that particular amendment. Mr. President, I recommend board approval, budget amendment number twenty-one, twenty-two, oh three, local maintenance as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the budget amendment twenty-one, twenty-two, zero-three, local maintenance as presented. Do you have a motion?
I'll move.
Have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza. Have a second?
Sir.
Have a second from Mr. James Mulkey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seven point six, budget amendment twenty-one, twenty-two, zero-four, Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, the district's entered into a contract with Turf Tank. So Turf Tank is a company that provides GPS-driven automated field striking equipment. And so historically in the past, we take several men, several staff members, the better part of the day to strike one field. And this particular device should put the GPS coordinates in, you fill it with the paint, and you turn the boost. And all of our fields, all of our different facilities have been geocoded. And those GPS coordinates have been inputted into the turf tank. And so it does everything from shop foot rings to baseball fields, soccer fields, football fields in every one of our facilities. And it just takes a guy to keep an eye on it as opposed to several men a day for one field. And so the equipment has been fantastic. It's increased efficiency, but it's also perfect in terms of how efficient and how technically effective it is. However, it's technically a lease. And so it needs to be booked a different way as a lease. And so that's really essentially what we're bringing to you tonight. You can see the increase is sixty thousand dollars and then we'll be moving those into debt service to pay for the lease annually. Is that relatively online there, Ms. Judy? So it's essentially a booking transaction that we have to do in order to procure this particular piece of equipment given that it's technically a contracted piece of equipment as opposed to purchased.
So this equipment will strike turf and grass.
Yes, sir. And part of the lease is identified. It comes with all of the material. That was one of the expenses that we used to have to incur and store that paint material. Now it becomes, it's part of the deal. Pretty satisfying. And our maintenance crew is really satisfied. Yeah, so it's a, it's a five, seven year or five year lease?
Uh, six year.
Six year lease and you pay annually. About sixty thousand dollars. Why would you buy, why would you not buy your own? And that's a great question. I asked the same question. Because the technology evolves so rapidly, we get a couple of things with this. We're guaranteed that it goes down and bring you a new. We're guaranteed that it goes down and bring you a new one. We're guaranteed that the technology advances, we get the new technology. If you buy your, your 2022 Volkswagen and 2030 is old and you're stuck with your 2002. So it was kind of the nature of the market for this particular piece of equipment. It's, we researched it for a couple of years before we took the leap and it felt like it was the right path to take. Again, Mr. Thomas is going to give you multiple thumbs up as to how effective it's been. If you've had a chance to go to any of our facilities for any of our competitions, softball, baseball, soccer, football, it's pretty amazing. It's pretty fun to watch.
Is this company?
It's like watching paint get striked.
Is this Turft Paint, that's the name of the company or is there another?
We named our piece of equipment. What's the name? What's the name? The guys that gave us.
I don't know what the last name is they gave it actually, but yeah, Turft Paint is actually the corporation. We'll get that to you with the video. We can put that in, we can put that in our presentation. But yes, you're always welcome to come out and watch.
Does maintenance come with this contract or?
Yes. Routine preventative maintenance, replacement, all in. All right. President, I recommend board approval, budget amendment number 21, 22, 04, local maintenance as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve budget amendment 21, 22, 04, local maintenance as presented. Do I have a motion?
No.
Have a motion from Mr. James Mulkey. Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Victor Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Seven point seven. Resolution to nominate Rose Scott for past B superintendent of the year. Will we go any farther? As a trustee, this has been, and go through the past B conventions, this has been on my bucket list and one of the things I wanted to accomplish. And it is a great honor to, to get this done because I, because when you have the best of the best, it's great to see that the best of the best gets recognized. What I wish I could do at TAN, again, what I wish I could do was recognize the best of the best of the admin that we have, the best of the best of the teachers that we have and the best of the best community in Barrett County that we have. And I feel true that from my heart. I think it's sad that not everybody gets to share it, but I'm glad that we have the opportunity to nominate this gentleman next to me because you're truly the best of the best in what you do. And so with that, does anybody else have anything else to say?
I'm excited.
Well deserved.
The best of the best is very accurate. We can go from insurance premiums to soil studies to attendance to, you know, as well.
I would also like to thank Ms. Asher Coles and Dr. Fuller for all y'all's hard work to get this done as well. I know it takes a lot of effort from everybody to get this put together so we can get it done on time and get the paperwork done. So thank y'all very much for getting this done.
Yes, our pleasure.
With that, we're going to adopt this resolution. The East Central Independent School District Board, the board of trustees on this date, April 21st, 2022, resolved to nominate Mr. Ronald Scott superintendent of schools for Texas Association of School Board Superintendent of the Year for his exemplary and visionary leadership toward increasing opportunities and improving outcomes for all students in the East Central Independent School District. Do I have a motion?
No.
Have a motion from Monique Crisus. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from multiple trustees. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'm going to struggle with talent competition.
You'll win that one, I guarantee you. The nickname's Antonio next to me, so let's move on to the consensus. Is there anyone? Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consensus? I believe we do have somebody.
I'd like to pull 8.4 new middle school CTE courses for 2022.
All right, we have 8.4 that wants to be pulled. Is it 8.3?
8.4.
New middle school CTE courses for 2022, 2023. Mr. Scott.
Yes, sir. This time I'd like to call Dr. Amanda Holman up, my director of career technology programs to say a few things about this. We're actually very excited about some recent changes the DEA's made in funding for CTE courses at the middle school and the opportunities that it's going to provide for our students. Dr. Holman?
President Massengill, Mr. Scott and members of the board, just to give you a little bit of background on what's happening right now, the Texas legislature has changed some of the laws surrounding current technical education. Prior to the last legislative session, current technical education was not funded, anything below the ninth grade level. So districts across the state that were providing current technical education programming to their students were doing so on local funds. And they also were not allowed to generate funds for students in the seats. So there's been some other changes with funding that they've gone to some very funding for current tech ed programs recently. And so with this new model of funding that they're going to be providing for CTE programming, we are now allowed to both utilize and generate funding from students in the sixth or seventh and eighth grade, which would allow us the opportunity to give some students a chance to take CTE courses at the middle school, which directly aligns with our opportunities that we look at to increase the amount of post-secondary readiness that our students receive coming into high school. So with this, we've chosen four courses that will directly align to multiple programs of study at our high schools and allow our students a variety of options once they take these introductory level courses to move up through their programs of study. So we're really excited to be offering these to our students. It'll give them four new opportunities that'll be more focused around their post-secondary goals and post-secondary readiness. So I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
So when you show here that you're saying culinary cast, all that, and it sits campus, that means that the, of course, we're doing a book that the heritage and legacy?
Yes. So the course name here in this, this top one will be for the class of tourism. The programs of study that that course can align to could be the culinary program of study that's at East Central High School or at Cast High School, we have lodging and resort management, web development, travel and tourism and attractions, and then the business management and retail management programs of study. So essentially a student who takes this course in either seventh or eighth grade could be directly aligned to any of those programs of study at any point throughout their, their transition into high school.
Well, they're getting these courses at their home campus or will they be coming up to the campus?
They'll be getting them at their home campus. So both heritage and legacy will offer the campus the, the courses. We'll have appropriate and certified staff there at the campus that can provide that to them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Is there anything else that some of the trustees would like to pull from the consensus? Do I have a motion to accept the, did I have a? Have a motion from Victor Garza? Is that yes, Mr. Mulkey? A second?
Sir.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to executive session. All right. The board of trustees on April 26th, 21st, 2022, beginning at 7:59 PM convenes in a closed meeting in accordance to the Texas Open Meeting Act, Government Code, section 551.074 to discuss 9.1 consultation with attorney, 9.2 employee complaint, not only white, 9.3 personnel matters. The board then is closed meeting at 10:26 PM on April 21st, 2022, no actual technical and closed meeting. I move to deny the level three employee complaint and additionally, I move to deny all of the remedies sought by this White. Anything you have in mind to say before we have a vote on this motion?
I just want to say that we, I hope the time we spent shows you that we took care and that I, you were. Thank you guys.
So we have a motion. Do I have a motion to accept the, I'm sorry, my apologies. All in favor for the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We move to adjournment. All in favor for adjournment?
Aye.
All opposed? Move your adjournment.